Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. We just did a fun little red ribbon cutting ceremony at a new business in town, Bugsy's Grill. And I've been there a couple times, and they do have good food, so.
It's good.
Get a chance, check it out. All right, moving right along, we did pledge allegiance, how about roll call?
Sandy Kufa, here. Chris Oregan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, I'm gonna make, do this in one, actually three amendments I'm gonna do in one motion. Amend the consent agenda to add communication, resignation of fire department Logan DuPage, new business fourteen, hire part-time fire department Troy Teller, and under fifteen in new business, hire part-time police Brian Chadwick.
Support.
Yeah, motion is support. Discussion questions. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose, motion carries. Next we have a public hearing for the township budget. I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the township budget at 7:02 PM.
Support.
Motion is support, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, like to now open up the public hearing for the Clay Township budget. Do we have anyone that wants to, any public comments on the budget? Going once. Going twelve, twice.
Twelve.
That twelves. Cindy, you got anything? Okay. All right, no takers, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing for township budget at 7:03.
Support.
Okay, motion is support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next we have bills payable.
Make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-five cents.
Support.
Motion is support, do we have any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving right along, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. Check reports, there are no notices, communication from police, thank you. I believe there's four thank you cards in the consent agenda, resignation from firefighter Logan DuPage, request from the treasurer, treasurer's retreat, Hilton and Rozepa, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars plus lodging, assessing Lawton administration of agricultural property class for thirty dollars.
Support.
Yeah, motion is support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. I didn't do public comments.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on anything?
I'd just like to mention that this Thursday, we start the annual Algonac Clay Music in the Parks. Title sponsor is M.L. Chartier. And we are going to open up with Renegade, high-energy country rock sponsored by Scoreboard and more. We've got art in the parks coming back. We have a new feature in Algonac behind the stage with some fun giant game activities for the kids, and the weather report looks very promising. Thank you.
And starts in Algonac for the first five.
First five weeks in Algonac, then we move to Clay.
Rock on.
Rock on.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll move right along. Gosh, I can't believe I almost forgot the public comment. Yeah. All right, next is our supervisors' report. Dig that out. It's been busy. Oh, we have actually some stuff from SEMCOG. Supposed to remind everyone, don't clog our pipes with flushing wipes that aren't disposable. No wipes are disposable, see that? And the toilet, and don't dump our waste into the storm, storm water, the storm drains, oil and stuff, and about keeping our drinking water clean. I got tons of information on that if anyone so chooses. Supervisors' report, well, unfortunately, we're gonna have to start off with high water and, oh, I'm hoping I can hit it all in a condensed version, it's been very busy. We've been doling out sandbags, two hundred per person, as they, if they need more, they gotta fill the two hundred up, then they come and get more. And it's been a challenge to get the sandbags, I don't know if you've seen the news, there's other parts of the country, Mississippi, the Arkansas River, it's, they have actually a lot worse issues than we have, and it's a good year to be in the sandbag business. So we've been ordering them and they get delayed and delayed and delayed. Well, we got seventy-five thousand in Friday and they're holding pretty tight, I think our demand's dropping, because in the past, we get a shipment of, you know, forty thousand, thirty thousand, and be out in two or three days. And believe it or not, with the sandbags we brought in, and the ones that we've gotten from the county, and from other people that donated some, were actually over three hundred thousand sandbags in circulation. So that's a lot of sandbags. Hopefully, we don't have to buy anymore. And same thing with the sand, we're trying to keep up, we got two areas where people can get sand and, or the bags. We've been dealing a lot with the roads, we have some roads that are underwater. They actually, I met with county road commissioner this morning, we are pumping out Riverside and Marina, it's underwater, and they, I was just down there about an hour or two ago, there, there's still water in the road, but they are pumping the road, and hopefully, that will be, that will be dry, but you know, there's some areas in Anchor Bay Drive, Colony. We have a road closure, Columbine at Voges on the island, that is underwater. So it's definitely, definitely a challenge. And I know there's more, Colony has a couple, three spots in their water. If you're driving, please go slow, because we're getting a lot of complaints from the people that live where these roads are. I say it not joking, like, go no wake, the roads. Because it splashes up on the yard, all kinds of stuff, there are males, it's wet, and it's a challenge for these people that live where the roads are under, underwater, so.
Also, there's a lot of potholes.
Yes.
Huge, huge.
There are some.
Take your tire out, potholes underneath some of this water, so.
That's for sure, because it's hard on the roads. And everyone's gonna say, well, why don't you fix the road, I've talked to the road commissioner, actually, it cannot really fix a road that's underwater. You can't compress it, you're just wasting your money. And so, anyhow, I've been, I think the water level since our last meeting is up about three and a half, four inches, right now. And it's, you know, due to rain and wind is a short-term effect that can raise or lower our waters. We've been really lucky, we haven't had a good, bad, a good, a strong south, southwest wind event yet here, because that will pop our water up potentially five inches in a matter of hours. I mean, it goes back down the same amount of time, but still, the damage is done. Been working a lot with enforcement on the waters, as far as the waves, the pleasure boats, the two hundred, six hundred foot rule. I know that the sheriff has been out, and they've been writing tickets, Memorial Day, I think they wrote around twenty tickets, I can't remember the numbers. Zero tolerance, I'm telling people, zero tolerance, if they see you, there's no warning, you're getting a hundred and thirty-five dollar ticket.
Holy smokes.
Yep.
That's encouraging for the residents.
Oh, yeah, there's zero tolerance, and I know some people that got written up, I goes, they called me, and I goes, yep. And we had DNR boats out, and actually, the state police boats out on Memorial Day weekend, we didn't have them this weekend. I have calls in, on, with, actually, I spoke with the head of the DNR enforcement and some lieutenants about hopefully getting some more patrols, DNR patrols on the weekends here. And hopefully, we can do the same with state police, and we're looking at a lot more options too, as far as more enforcement. Also, most of the people see a blue light, they're gonna, they're gonna slow down. And I have to admit, I've been out on the wire the last two weekends, and I've seen a lot of pleasure boats going slower. I think we got the word out, but you still have, well, I can't say what they are here, but you still have some jerks that aren't slowing down. So we are definitely working hard with enforcement and other agencies. I do want to give a shout out to Donovan DeWicky, he organized on Harson's Island a youth group, and I'm not sure, I'm kinda out of the loop exactly what group it was, but I know he worked with our, our emergency management people up in St. Clair, St. Clair County. And Saturday, he got a lot of volunteers to fill sandbags and place them for some people. And we're still working for, on more for, to have that option going for some people, we're trying to get involved, get a few churches involved, and see if they can help some people out that need some, some help that they can't help themselves. Really, that's basically why we're here. And I know I'm forgetting some other stuff, it's been time-consuming and sometimes frustrating, but we're getting through it. And everyone wants to know what the, you know, what's the water gonna do, and I don't know, I, I'm, I don't know as much as anybody else, I'm hoping, praying at its peak, like I say, it really depends on the rain, the person, how much rain we get here and up north. That's what it's gonna, gonna be based on from this point forward, or wind for a short term. Anything out of the south or west or in-between is not good for us.
Order some more sunshine.
Yes, like today is beautiful, no humidity, nice breeze, lots of evaporation, we need like three months of this. So, yeah, it's been very, very active. Oh, one thing I should say, everyone says, well, can we make the whole, the river, the whole river no wake, no wake, can we check into that? The DNR doesn't have the authority to do that. The only person really does is the governor. And we talked to the governor's office, the only way she may, not will, may do that, is if we declare a state of emergency here, not a township flood emergency, a state of emergency. The, actually, talked to the emergency management people from the state, they said, Artie, you do not want to do that, because you give up a lot of local control, and they said, there will be decisions, not good decisions made quickly, and you won't have any say about it. So that's why I've been really trying to step up the enforcement on the water. Enforce the rules that we do have, and quite honestly, on the south channel, I don't, I don't think that, because that's the international border, I don't think the governor could even say the whole river is no wake, because half of it's Canadian anyhow, then you got the freighters also. So like I say, we have been working hard on this, and I'm just, we haven't had a really good, hot weekend yet. And I know I'm gonna get a lot of phone calls that Monday after our first one, so. The Colony Water Main project is going strong, actually, the Water Main is put in place. We're working out on the final phases of it, in fact, I was down there today, we do have a problem with the, like everyone else, the high water is making it difficult to pour some of the driveways where we have to repair. And so we are gonna have some additional costs to pump, pump them dry, and we're gonna put some quick cure cement in there, some construction mesh, they call it, and pin it to the other driveways. And, you know, the only other decision is we can wait till the water goes down, and those people, they don't want that, I don't want that. We want to get this job done quicker. It still is, is gonna be under our contingency that we put in on the project, so as far as the numbers is, you know, we're still looking okay. I mentioned Columbine Road is closed. We do have, okay, and, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit. The DNR access sites, we have two of them that are actually closed, one Anchor Bay Drive is closed, we have a sign right as you go into Anchor Bay Drive that is closed. And the Schnucks access site on Harson's Island is also closed due to high water, flooded out. And, oh, the construction on the second bridge of Anchor Bay, the replacement construction is starting, is going, going well. We got one lane done, working on the other, I'm not sure what the timeframe is, they're looking at getting it done. But the third bridge is actually slated for fall replacement too. And I just found out this morning, they're probably gonna replace the fourth bridge right after the turn, this fall too, while they're there. Saves for mobilization. And on the Flamingo Bridge, we're starting the engineering, they're probably gonna be here, if not today, next couple days, to do boring samples of the ground, and we're gonna get that project rocking and rolling here pretty soon too. See, met with Ira, we're finalizing the agreement going forward for police services. We've been doing a lot of work getting quotes for our liability insurance for the township. Splash pad is open, yay, maybe that will drop the water a little bit. Just saying, I don't know. Got any other ideas, don't put everyone's boat in the water. Planning commission, we're looking at doing a joint meeting, is that the nineteenth, Mark?
Nineteenth.
June nineteenth, I think you're the one, only one that can't make.
Eighteenth.
I think it's the eighteenth.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Is it Tuesday? Okay.
Yeah, because there's always.
So, has there been a change in that, is it eighteenth or nineteenth?
It's Tuesday the eighteenth.
That's the eighteenth.
Okay, all right, Tuesday the eighteenth.
I will be late to that meeting.
So, okay. It's to, it's to go over our master plan going forwards, starting the process. And also, we have a meeting coming up on our sewer interceptor. As you might recall and mentioned a couple times, we, we have some issues, we're not sure what kind of issues yet. Basically, we have a couple ideas on how to repair it, and it's one of those things where, once you get in there, you can't stop and, you know, get quotes and everything, so we're actually interviewing companies for the project. We have a pretty good idea, but we have five proposals we're going to be looking at later this week, and interviewing which ones, which company we're both, we're more comfortable with going forward, and that's a joint project with us, Algonac and Ira. Let's see, insurance splash, oh, last week, we had the Blue Water, our Blueways Trails. We did a kayak paddle, I went on, my fiancee and a few others, I think there was what, twenty-five?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three kayakers, and we went around Russell Island, it was a two-hour paddle, and we ended up, ate dinner at Catch Twenty-two, and it was a good day, it was warm, thank God, I got a wet butt, but everything else was warm that day. And the following day is Thursday, we did our first slow roll, and it started here from the park, and we went up to the Clay Township Park. And that was a lot of fun too. And we're, we're gonna get a lot more participation, I think we had about twenty-five people, and it's, there's a lot of, oh, I wish I could go, and this and that, and, or they forgot about it or whatever, but we're gonna do six, five more, and there's, some of them are themed, you know, it's, it'll be fun. Cleanup weekend, this was last weekend, oh my gosh, were we busy. How many, what did we say, fifteen dumpsters on the island, John? Sixteen dumpsters on the island, they're, they're the large dumpster, and we compacted. And over there, we also burned, we burned half of it too, all the wood and stuff, we burned, otherwise, well, shh, don't tell George. And we took in lots of hazardous material, I, I'm not sure, I know Saturday, we had seven, six or seven boats in a wave runner that was dropped off that we collapsed and got rid of, but we had a first, we had a first, a motor home. Do we call Bobby Johnson or someone, okay, so, we had a motor home dragged in, and on the mainland, we, we did five, five dumpsters on the mainland of stuff. How would we do on tires?
Two dumpsters full.
Two dumpsters full of tires, you know, it's better than manning it up in the ditch, so. It was a, it was a busy cultural event in the township.
There's still three dumpsters waiting to get off the island.
Yep. So, other than that, there's all kinds of parks and rec programs going on. If you're on Facebook, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec and like it, or if you have any questions, call the office, we got all kinds of programs going on. So, thank you much, and sorry it took so long, but lots of stuff going on.
Get a consensus on our board, is that a good date for that?
Yeah, all but Chrissy. So, I don't know if we wanna, are you heartbroken?
No, I'm not heartbroken, I'll catch up.
Okay, all right.
Sounds like we're all good, Cindy.
Yeah, we're all good.
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth.
Okay, next we have the fire chief's report, George.
Good evening, I attended three meetings in the month of May. First one was the St. Clair County Chiefs Association, and general business was discussed, they're also going to introduce Mavis, or extend Mavis into the dispatch, which we'll be giving run cards to the dispatch, so when we have a first or second run, they'll know which agencies will be responding. I attended a meeting with the U.S. Coast Guard also that month for covering Jobby Noonery, making, setting the plans for that. And also teleconference with the Army Corps of Engineers to discuss the water levels in Lake St. Clair and surrounding areas. Fire department personnel has been working out, working, passing out sandbags and working with the DPW. Fire department also attended the Memorial Day Parade. Primal Vent System is installed in both stations, it's in phase one, there'll be three phases, one is the installation, second phase is where the electricians come in and hook the system up, and the third is where the technician comes in and does the fine tuning and sets the sensors on it. So, we're in phase two. We did a standby for the kayaks, they went around Russell Island.
Thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. The other thing is, I would like to thank the Clay Township office staff for their assistance in keeping the residents of the township advised on the status of the sandbags. They are very valuable. At times, at last minutes, the sandbags would show up, we'd come down and tell them, but the office staff was there to report to the residents and advise them when we had them. Also, Megan Rickard, she resigned from the fire department, she took a job, full-time job with Detroit Metro Airport, she's a firefighter, paramedic down there. She's gonna be deeply missed, she was a valuable employee.
Will we be able to use her once in a while, once she gets settled?
I don't think so, because of the union.
Oh, okay.
They have certain rules. I also would like to thank the Harson's Island Flower Club for putting flowers on Station, on Station Two. They put those out again in the pots, they look very nice, so, station looks nice. Anything?
Any questions for George?
I have a question concerning sandbags, since you're a major catalyst in the distribution, as well as John. Who was selling sandbags for two dollars and fifty cents filled down next to John Legas?
Who was selling them?
Legas, that has nothing to do with what you're thinking, Mark, that's completely separate. As far as the one that we got complaints on, we did handle it, and we had them in here, so, that's been handled.
Okay, so they weren't our sandbags, and?
No, the citizens themselves got the sandbags, they were paying them the labor to fill the sandbags, is what it was.
I saw a sign that said, "Sandbags filled, two fifty."
This one out here, those are not from here, they're not from the townships.
Okay. Tell ahead, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, nothing on their unfinished business, on their new business, we got a whole bunch of resolutions to pass. First resolution, two thousand and nineteen oh five, set annual salary for supervisor, clerk, and treasurer.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and nineteen dash oh five, to set the annual salary of the township supervisor, clerk, and treasurer.
Support.
Okay, motion is support, any discussion? I want to remind everyone too, this is, all these resolutions we're gonna pass, we hashed it over in our budgets, it's in our budgets, and, so, yeah. We have to do this every year. We have a motion to support, any, any more discussion?
Is this forty-two thousand for the, per annum for just statutory duties?
Yes.
Is that, what was the percentage of pay raise, was it on that, or was it on the stipends?
Zero.
Zero. I'm, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I'm, just for TV land.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have motion is support, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
A motion carries, next we have resolution two thousand and nineteen oh six, set annual salary for trustees.
Make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and nineteen oh six, to set the annual salary of the township trustees.
Yeah, motion is support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Okay, resolution two thousand and nineteen oh seven, set FOIA coordinator stipend.
Make a motion for resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven, to set annual FOIA coordinator stipend.
Support.
Okay, we have motion is support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
A motion passes. Next we have resolution two thousand and nineteen oh eight, set annual deputy stipends.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and nineteen dash oh eight, to set the annual deputy stipend.
Support.
Yeah, motion is support. Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion?
I have, just for clarification, on the last now there-for resolution, the MEB resolved, it says that pay a stipend of $500 for required election held to the clerk, which is in a small C, no capital, and the deputy clerk, which is capitalized.
Not the capitalized, one isn't bold.
Okay, well, I mean capitalized, I mean bold. But is that for every election?
Yes.
Both get them for...
Yep, and that was changed last year for the premise of reimbursements. Without a set amount, we can't claim any reimbursement for it.
Okay, no, just clarification, just for myself.
That's in lieu of any overtime associated with the election.
Yep, okay. But that's both, both.
Yes.
You one and the deputy.
Full day of Saturday that we're now required to be here eight hours. There is the day before the election setup and then the full, usually sixteen, seventeen, eighteen hour days on election day.
Just a clarification for TV land.
I understand.
All right, we have motion, we have support and a motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All, no, roll call.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
All right, next we have Resolution 2019-09, set parks and recs stipend. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-09 to set the annual parks and recreation coordinator stipend.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Resolution 2019-10, set board meeting dates.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-10 setting the township of Clay St. Clair County board meeting dates.
Support.
We have support and motion. Any discussion?
Just as an FYI, the only date that changed to Tuesday was September 3rd for Labor Day.
Yep.
And there's two that will be on the island.
Two, the normal two dates that are scheduled on the island. If the board chooses, we can change that or we can leave that and see how it goes.
Okay. So September 3rd, meet on a Tuesday in lieu of Memorial Day. It's probably a good call.
Labor Day, yeah.
For Labor Day. All right, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? All, our roll call vote.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, Resolution 2019 is to adjust the sewer rates. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-11 to adjust sewer rates.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. This is, actually, I've been, actually, we're kind of proud. Our water rates or our water fund has been pretty darn good. And I don't foresee us having to adjust the rates. I know this year, we, it seems funny to freeze, freeze our water rates, frozen water. But I think we'll be good for next couple, three years going forward with very minimal or no increase in our water rates. Our sewer fund, though, it still needs help, especially with this unknown interceptor line that we have. You know, that could be a one, two million dollar project. We'll know here in months. But our sewer, sewer fund definitely does need some more help. So, and this is, I believe, it's a 5% increase. Just so everyone knows, just on the sewer portion of the water and sewer bill.
Is there any other way to pay for that sewer repair other than raising the sewer rates?
Well, this isn't, this isn't actually, that will be a bond issue that will, the sewer department will have to pay, you know, down the road. And, but this is for maintaining what we have, actually, right now.
Well, you said there's a 5% increase, though.
Yes.
Yeah, previously, I believe it was like $58 something per quarter and $2 something per 1,000. And the increase is now 60.27 per quarter and 3.01 per 1,000 gallon.
So are we gonna do this every year?
We have been doing it every year for the last five years.
So it's gonna be a 5% increase every year?
Yeah.
I think we'll take a better look.
It's determined by the auditors.
Yeah, the audit.
This is their recommendation.
Right.
We'll fire the auditors.
Okay.
We, we had a rate study done. When we first got in, the sewer fund was probably in the red. And it needed help. And instead of, you'll see some communities, they'll jump up 20, 25%. And, you know, that's not right either. So we've been stepping it up 5%, 5% per year. And we're getting better. But now we have this issue with our, our main interceptor line that goes from the end of the township, basically where the, oh, what's the pump station? I'm having a brain.
Zobelkort.
Zobelkort Pump Station, all the way to the plant. That whole interceptor line could be compromised. So we don't know what's going on with that yet.
Well, don't we have new accounts coming in based on the construction that we've had here in the township?
I'll, I'll show you the budget, Mark. We'll go over it. We, we did. You know, it's, you know, everyone, nobody likes to pay for sewer and water, but boy, you want your toilet to flush when you hit the little lever, too.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that point.
We're paying the county to run the plant.
Yeah.
And our costs are going up.
Yeah, I'm not arguing those at that point. I just, I understand that. But if we got money that we can do or incorporate somewhere else from that to help the residents, I'll pay for that. I mean, you got a lot of people on fixed budget. Maybe they can't afford $3 a month. I don't know.
And how it works, too, is restricted funds. Water has to pay for water. Sewer has to pay for sewer. We can borrow from water. We can borrow. But water rates can't pay for sewer rate, sewer expenses. You know, just like police and fire, they're all, all these funds are restricted.
I think, has anybody done a study on the new building and construction we have in? And how much money is going to be provided by that new construction? It's gonna go into the sewer.
When the auditors do our rate study, they do an anticipated amount of new builds and what that additional income is going to be. Are they currently doing or are they just...
No, we just finished one, not too long ago.
Yeah, it's all based on projections.
Yep. Okay, so. So, okay, Resolution 2019-11, adjust sewer rates. Like I said, it's going up 5%. Wish it didn't have to, but you gotta keep our toilets flushing. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
No.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Yeah.
Were you out of order?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Resolution 2019-12, adopt the township budget. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Resolution 2019-12 setting the 2019, 2020 Clay Township annual budget.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Okay, on their new business name, contract for supervisor, clerk and treasurer effective 7/1/19.
Make a motion to approve the contract for township supervisor, clerk and treasurer effective July 1st, 2019.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Just so everybody knows, this is for all the non-statutory duties that myself, Cindy and Chrissy does. It ultimately gives more power to the board that, hey, you're not doing your job. And it's a vehicle to hold the clerk, supervisor and treasurer more accountable to the board. Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion?
I'm glad that you put the duties that you're, you know, not statutory duties.
Doesn't say anything about high water, Joanne.
I know.
I have to amend it.
Add that on for next year.
Yeah.
We, no, no.
Is there a line for other duties as a sign?
Yeah.
I see that.
All other duties as, yeah.
That this list has been expanded a little bit because of the changes and, you know, the way we do business and stuff. And it's all good that we get to see that. But I do have, I want a clarification or understanding for the treasurer's additional duties. For number 13, and the way it's written to me, this is participate in twice monthly township board meetings and associated township issues daily. But township board meetings, you have to come to anyway?
You know what, Joanne, she had provided a list of all the duties that she did when we originally gave her an additional salary. And I went and modified and took out the statutory duties for this. And I missed that one, so I apologize because that should not be.
No, that's, yeah.
You're correct, yeah.
Okay.
She was out of, out of office the day that I put all that together. So I just pulled up the old one.
Cross 13 out.
Just part of 13.
Well, part of township board meetings, yes.
I'm sure at this point, since then, she can also expand on that quite maybe.
Yes, yes, okay, yes.
Like Iclaw payments.
Yes, yes, you can add several more.
In your spare time, Christie, if you would like to update your list, just let me know so we have it for your file.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
So I had a question as well. And I went around to some of my fellow board members asking really about the rate of increase on the stipend between contract years 2019, 2020 and 2020, 21. But in turn, it's a series of checks and balances because your statutory pay is not going up.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So what you're doing is, in essence, you're defaulting to the stipend, which really gives the board a little more control.
Exactly.
But it's really the same increase that...
Across the board.
Across the board that we see in most of our other departments.
Right.
So I just, I feel better that I understand that process a little bit more. And I appreciate the format.
A question on the contract specifications. It's not a big issue, but what I see here is leave absencification personally. That's what's in your contract anyways, right?
It's a, well, it's a standard agreement in any of the township contracts. When we originally split the two payments with the previous board, they wanted to make sure that we couldn't decide to... Because with our township official pay, we could not come in for a month. And you can't just say, hey, don't pay Artie Bryson. He didn't come in for a month.
Okay.
Because he's an elected official. So we wanted to make sure that we accounted for if somebody wants to take an absorbent amount of time off. Well, then the board can reassign those duties to somebody else. And then they would be able to be able to get paid for it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, this all came about, it seems like many, many moons ago when we had problems with our old, an old clerk that didn't come to work. What's that?
Your old clerk was a little busy.
Little busy, yeah. Didn't I come to work and like, we were powerless. Still had a payer. And the board was basically powerless against it. And we paid the whole, the whole salary. Because how it works, we are required, each office has a statutory duty. The state, laid out by the state is the list. And all they have to do is make an attempt to do these statutory duties. We are, the board is required to payer. The township is required to payer. And the only reason, the way to get rid of somebody is if they resign, if they commit a felony. Or...
Which that just recently changed in the last couple of years.
Yeah, or death.
Or recall.
Or recall. And basically, that's what they said. The people hired us, hired us, the people has to fire them. And so this gives a more, like I say, a more power to the board to say, okay, you're doing your statutory duties, but you're not doing your non-statutory duties, which we expect. And it makes us more accountable to the board. When we first did this, we got big kudos from the Michigan Township Association. And I remember even Times Herald did an opinion in their editorial saying, hey, this is a really good idea and other people should follow suit. And actually, there's quite a few that have.
And this was what motivated us to do a policy manual for the, all the extra duties that you do that aren't, you know, non-statutory.
Exactly.
So a lot of good come out of it, yes.
Good information. I'm glad I brought it up.
Yeah. Like, when you have problems, you know, it also gives you opportunities to fix things, so. All right, do we have, I can't remember. Do we have motion and support? I believe we do.
We do.
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, next we have our contract for our assessor, Ms. Lawton, effective 7/1/19, a three-year contract.
Make a motion to approve the contract for Assessor Lawton effective 7/1/19.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
I forgot to bring my bottle of water. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
I wish they had water in it.
I know. Who failed on that? Motion passes. All right, moving right along. Contract for DPW Superintendent Boyer. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract for DPW Superintendent John DeBoyer effective 7/1/19.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Sandy Kufal, yes. Krista Regan.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
All right, twelve under new business, contract for police chief, Coach.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for police chief, Mike Coach, effective seven one nineteen.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Do we have this on there?
That's next.
Got cut off on my agenda.
You gotta flip it over.
Flip it.
Thirteen. Oh, it's way up here. It's hidden. All right, thirteen. Our KCI mailing our summer tax bill for twenty eight fifty-one and fifty cents.
Make a motion to approve the KCI summer tax bill for two thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Support.
Motion loss of support. Need to say anything on this? Does anyone have any questions?
It's cheaper than we can do it, right?
Cheaper than what we can do it ourselves, so. Motion and support. Hey, I can, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next we have a new hire for part-time fire department, Troy Teller.
I believe he is here with us.
Yes, he is. He has sat through all these darn motions.
Back again. I would like permission to hire Troy Teller for, as a probationary firefighter. He is certified fire one, fire two. He also has his EMT, State of Michigan EMT. He's passed his background check and the interview process.
Sounds great.
Where'd you work at, where's your full-time job at?
I'm a stay-at-home dad.
Okay, right.
Three teenagers.
No wonder you want to put firefighters.
To every dad, three teenagers. Especially two of them girls, so. No offense.
No wonder he has no hair.
It went about seventeen years ago when I started staying home with them, so.
I'll make a motion to hire Troy Teller as a probationary firefighter and he has his firefighter one and two and has a current EMT license, so.
Support.
Motion and support, any more discussion? Questions for Mr., for Troy?
Chris has got something. I can see the wheels turning. I can hear it.
Do I see smoke?
Troy, why do you want to work for Clay Township?
I have a, I had a friend that lives in the area that worked with Chief Rose, because I came from West Michigan about a year ago and moved, excuse me, moved into Baltimore. And I contacted that friend and I said, where do I want to go? And first place he recommended was, he goes, go to Clay Township. He goes, you're not really, he goes, you get to actually be a firefighter there. I'm presently at New Baltimore and I sit at the station a lot. I came from where I came from. I ran thirteen hundred calls a year. Out of those thirteen hundred, within the year I ran three hundred eighty-five of those calls. I can't sit at a station, I didn't get a, get into this to just sit there and look at trucks all day. I want to help people and put out fires and essentially have fun doing this, so.
Good answer.
Good.
How to drive a boat?
Do I know how to drive a boat? A little bit.
Good.
I asked and said a little bit.
Y'all learn.
Pon-tuned for the first time last summer, so.
Our firefighters wear a lot more hats.
Yes, they do. Yep.
We'll keep you busy.
All right, any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor of hiring a part-time fire department, Troy Teller, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Teller.
Chief, I did leave some paperwork in your box.
From the sign? Okay, next we have a new hire, part-time police officer, Brian Chadwick. Chief, you want to give us the lowdown? This was a late add-on?
Yeah, this was a late add-on. We were working on the background investigation and that, we were waiting for some things to come back. I didn't get them back till a few hours ago, but I didn't want to wait two more weeks before we got this going and started training with Brian. So Brian comes as a retired sergeant from Chesterfield Township. He spent many years in the detective bureau there and everybody I've talked to says he's one of the best investigators they've ever seen. So he's got a lot to bring to the table, definitely a lot of experience and a lot to go around to help out the other members of the department. So I look forward to the board's approval to bring him aboard.
Is he just going to be a PO?
Yes.
Okay.
Board, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the new hire, part-time police officer, Brian Chadwick.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion or questions for Chief?
Who's he replacing, anybody that?
Yes, we have part-time officer Jim O'Connor, who is leaving us right now. He took a job, full-time job with POLC, Police Officers Labor Council, which is one of the unions. We'll probably be seeing him in the future on the other side of the table, so.
Chief, can we make an effort to get him in here on our first meeting in July to meet our board?
Absolutely. Any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of new hire, part-time police officer, Brian Chadwick, please signify by saying yes.
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 Not aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all we have on our long agenda. Board member Thomas, Cindy, how are we doing?
Good. Just to keep it on the radar, I would still want to have the board look into our soil removal process.
Yep.
I don't want to call off the radar because I'm not in agreement with how we do that right now. I want to say best of luck to firefighter Logan DuPage and his future endeavors at his new location. I hope he enjoys his new job. Welcome to firefighter Teller and I also want to thank our police, fire and DPW, along with all of our township administrative office, for all of their assistance during high water. That's all, yeah.
Mark?
Cindy has pretty much said it all. Welcome Troy and Brian. Looking forward to working with the fire department as well as seeing Brian the next meeting. Policy commission, policy planning commission I should say, I'm back in corporate somewhere. We're reviewing compositing, composite, outdoor storage, composting, small clubs and short-term rental. And we do have a sample of a survey that we're going to be reviewing for the master plan. So I guess I can share it with the board at some point in time in the next couple of days here, take a look at it and make any recommendations to see fit. And thank you.
Welcome to the two new hires, one for the fire department and one for the police department. Welcome aboard. And I'm looking forward to that joint meeting with the planning commission and on Tuesday, June the eighteenth.
What time is that meeting?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven, yeah.
I think they want it six thirty, but that's a little bit too tight for people.
Yeah.
Then I won't be too late.
Seven o'clock, on the eighteenth?
Seven o'clock, June eighteenth.
I had six AM. So, you know, this.
You wait for us, Mark. We'll be here eventually.
I was at the planning commission meeting.
It's on the printer, buddy.
That's probably why I got a obscured message from Kathy today. I don't know, okay.
Sandy?
I just want to take a minute to bring some attention to the winds alert system that we have in place. I was actually out of town in New Jersey for our last meeting, but I was well updated on the water levels and the thunderstorms and actually I thought it was nice because my son was still here, so I got to know what was going on and check in on him. So anyone that isn't enrolled in the wind system, it's really easy and very informative, so I would encourage everyone to sign up. And then I also wanted to say thank you to the Clay Township Fire Department for representing Clay Township at Elginex Memorial Day Parade. There were a lot of kids there, it was great to see them learning the importance of that occasion and it was good to see Clay Township there. Thank you very much. That's all.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Let me start, I'd be remiss if I didn't at least expound on, I made a motion earlier about the township's annual budget and I just wanted to state that the annual budget this year is ten point six million dollars. So I left that off in my motion, I feel like it should be a piece of transparency. Secondly, I would like to thank the freighter captains and/or pilots. I've been fishing out at the north and south channels and especially at the south end, the south channels, the freighter pilots are really making concerted effort to slow down.
Every once in a while we get a rogue one, but no, they have.
I get it, I haven't seen it yet, but, but I see a substantial decrease in, I saw, I think, a thousand footer the other day and I've got a larger boat weight coming off of a twenty-six foot boat than I did the thousand footer.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, we at Clay Township, the residents of Harson's Island, the residents of the mainland appreciate their efforts. Secondly, congratulations to the graduating class of two thousand nineteen, Elginex High School.
That was going to be my thing.
There are some very bright and very talented young people that are entering our workforce, entering, going to college, just some really good people and I want to extend, extend them the best. Let them know that our board here is certainly capable of fielding any questions or if you need any references, come and see Coach Chris. Third, do we have a signage update? Something I probably could have asked earlier.
For which signs?
I'm most concerned about the sign over by Nelson's sandbar, the.
Yep, yeah, it's, it's on my desk.
Okay, all right, so we have progress being made?
Well, yeah, I need some hours.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, we, we have to get, you know, final artwork and a hard quote from Phillips Signs.
Well, maybe I could jump in and help assist the process with you guys, email campaign or something.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know why, that sign is just my biggest, it's a pet peeve. Every time I drive by that.
By the way, the DDA is, oh, I agree, the DDA is repainting their signs too. Welcome to the DDA. We have one over by Willacort and then two small ones out in front here.
Okay.
So that should be spruced up too.
Last but not least, the farmer's almanac is calling for a warmer than average June and a drier than average June. So we'll take that with a grain of salt, but let's keep our fingers crossed.
Cool.
We'll do that.
Echo, I guess.
No, no, no.
I don't have anything.
Go rats!
Go muskrats.
And how are we doing on the cloud, on the iCloud?
Good. Keep signing up.
Okay.
You know, we're getting a report every day and people are signing up, I guess more than I thought would sign up.
Oh, it's going to be huge.
Right at first, but keep going. We have something on our website for it? We have, yes.
I have to sign up.
Oh, that's coming up in July, the end of July, sand wrestling at the park. And I think they're trying to get a ladies division going this year too, if anyone's interested. I'm not.
She threw that out there.
I lose all my matches at home, so.
This is a wrestling, we have the high school wrestle, anybody can wrestle. In the volleyball court, we take the volleyball net down and they wrestle in all the sand and that's a lot of fun. I want to wrestle somebody there.
Somebody will wrestle you.
I know it.